Municipal part, it's your civil cost, your geotechnical cost. So we, again, I'm trying to give you the, the broadest number, um, so that should you choose to afford with it, we don't have a very uncomfortable conversation in November of twenty-six, right? And so I'm trying to be very, very candid about that. On the new construction side, I have not estimated your purchase price. I have no idea what that is. Um, and so it is absent of this, uh, it could be a dollar, it could be a million dollars, I have no idea. Um, we put in the hard cost at six hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, um, uh, knowing that I'm gonna put everything in on the ground at one time, and then it's the same effort, the same soft cost. So, you know, again, thumb in the wind, it's about twenty million dollars, give or take, order of back to cost, um, you know, to get that up and going. There's lots of unknowns in this. This is by no means the final number, I'm not going to gamble on this number. What I'm trying to give you is a very broad stroke, you know, and, and I think the takeaway here is that they're almost the same cost, big picture. You know, a, a million dollars over a fifty-year building is not a big number when you think of it in those terms, right? Um, so as you think about the risk and what the cost in that risk is, it seems like the risk of cost for the new build is about the same as the risk of what you don't know about the building you have. I think is the, is the broadest takeaway you could have. Uh, next slide. I think that was it. So, that is a lot of information that we tried to give you as quickly as we could in about four weeks to, to try to have as informed a conversation as possible today because we need to, we y'all are gonna have to make decisions relative to a November election script. Lot of caveats to all this.
Yeah. Was that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Casey, just, just curious, is the person from Stifle available yet?
He is available, but he's still having issues with his Zoom.
Okay.
So I have the option of putting him through on my Zoom number.
Okay, well, let's see, yeah, let's see if, if we got, if, if we're gonna get any questions from council about this part, give you a little more time. Council, do we have any questions for Mr. Long about the presentation that was made, uh, for us? Anyone? You got one, Joe?
I, I do some questions. Always have some questions on this. First, um, the jail space needs, how much jail space are we talking about?
A lot.
That's what I'm saying, thinking, there's a lot of jail space that's been talked about, right?
So.
And where's Chief? He's gone. How many prisoners do we, but so when I, when I hear that figure, what's the need? How many, how many prisoners do we house?
Great question, great question. Um, as I recall, we are replacing the same number of beds you have today, but we're replacing them at the current standard, which is what makes it really big. So your, your current detention area is special. We, we don't do bunk beds anymore, we don't do single corridors, um, we don't do the, the kind of bar arraignment kind of thing, right?
Right.
Um, uh, current standards has, you know, a jailer, they have a room, they have space to book people, you have booking areas, uh, we have a special padded cell, uh, because mental illness is a thing, we need to acknowledge that, um, we, we split detention for men and women down a blind corridor so that there's no visual, uh, uh, um, security issues. Uh, we provide showers, you have to provide a shower, hose somebody off if somebody's vomited, um, we have a detox area, uh, there is a, um, a hazmat, uh, shower, so if somebody spits in you and there's blood or whatever, um, so it's the same number of beds, I believe, and I wanna say it's six, six men and four women, which we have, for a total of twenty beds. Uh, there's an ADA cell, uh, that meets the current ADA standard, so if you have somebody who's disabled, uh, so, um, it, it replaces the number of beds you have in kind, but at the current standard. Um, so from a need perspective, as I recall, I don't know if anybody.
Chief, Chief came back. So Chief, a, a question, how, what's our jail count? Say, what's an average jail count?
There is, uh, sometimes we have zero, sometimes we have two, it's not very high in the question. So if they go stay long, get out long, if they go to, uh, county, they don't keep them in. They have two cells.
Yeah, that, that Sergeant Cantu is gonna, uh, speak to it.
I would say that now with the addition of jails, if you shy away from housing, there, that would have to be, because of the way it is.
Right.
You do, uh, try to get them to county, so it's possible.
And, and, and is it still the same process where county will send out, or, or do we transport?
It depends, uh, sometimes the military transports, but sometimes county will.
We'll send the van out.
Let, let me, let me jump in here, Joe, to get, to get a clarification. So Sergeant Cantu, are you suggesting that if the facilities were appropriate, and if they were up to standard, that you all would keep more prisoners in the jail? Is that what you're saying?
When I first started here, in the jail, uh, we constantly had to visit jails, uh, certainly in time, you know, just to work with that nature. Now, uh, as of the years, it's, it's gone quicker.
Because of the safety?
Because of the jail.
Gotcha, gotcha. I'm sorry.
And, 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 and to be clear, the, the jail count at the county has gone down as well, too.
I'm, I think so.
No, no, I, I, I'm just, the, the, the jail count is, county jails have actually seen a decrease in their, in their, in their count. Uh, 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 all I'm trying to analyze is, is need here, and, 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 and I wanna throw this out to the, to our community. I, I grew up in this community, I'm born in Galveston, but God in sixty-three. I, I'm very much believe in living within our means, and the numbers that I keep seeing, in my opinion, are not doable, right? They're not within our means. So, so I believe, and I joined in, in mayor when I first came on, I believe in we need a, a new public safety building. I made that commitment at that time. So the million-dollar question is, how do we live within our means? Now, I followed up on that, how do we live within our means, as I've traveled here and there, and TML and others? That, the, how are other departments living within their means? Well, Manville just approved, they didn't do a bond election, they did, that's good old Manville, uh, certificates of obligation for twenty-four million dollars for a new police station. We can't do that. I mean, that's not something within, within a realm of real, in, in my opinion, right, for us. But, uh, I, I did talk to Chief Smith about this when I saw this. There, there, um, there are modular police buildings that are, that have, that have, that you need to, to work with individuals like yourself, right? To, to, to meet our particular needs, and a, a prime example, one of here locally, happens to be at the University of Houston at Clear Lake. It's a three-story, if I'm a mistake, or a two-story, police headquarters building for the University of Houston at Clear Lake. A modular construction, you wouldn't believe it was modular. When I say modular, it's pre-built sections that are brought out, not, not a, a mobile home sort of, sort of that category. And, um, and I'll have for the record here and share with the committee, these are three companies that, that provide those sort of police buildings in a modular context, and are willing to provide general, um, figures, estimates of what something would look like, meeting, and they meet our standards as well, too. Now, I wanna be clear, you have to have someone of, of, of the gentleman's capability to, to, to build and plan these, but I, I, I would urge us to perhaps as a committee or as a community, to take a look at these other options, and I go back to live within our means, because my hope is I'm gonna be one of the biggest advocates, once we get this as an, as a bond item, and I, and, and I'm gonna say it, Councilmember Lowry, because I know you're historically opposed to these things, but I'm gonna be the biggest advocate for passing that bond, to get this finally off of our, you know, uh, off of our back. We do need, the police department needs, needs a safe working environment, and, uh, and as I'm reading the, the benefits of government modular building construction, it meets hurricane requirements as well, too. So I'm gonna share this with Ms. Casey, I'm gonna hand them over to you, and you can share with council and with the other members of the committee as well, too, as, as an option out there, that's all.
Chief, Chief Smith, I see you, uh, raise your hand, did you wanna respond?
Yes, sir. I'll say, well, living within our means, is there a figure that you have in mind, Councilman, that, that, so are you suggesting that the figure that he came up with is not sufficient, or it's too high? Or, that's just a question.
That, here's my concern, we've let this gone on, right? And then we've had the, I think this was pre-COVID when we had the first discussions, if I'm not mistaken, right, on, on the figures and the pricing, and, um, I know just alone, the price of steel has gone up, uh, uh, on these things and construction costs. Heck, right now, I have friends in the construction business who can't find people to work in the construction business, uh, with, with what's going on nationally as well, too. Uh, so, so costs, this six hundred and dot, dot, fifty-dollar figure, I'm, I think, I, I'm gonna argue it's gonna be a higher figure by the time we get this off the ground, okay? If and when we get it, God bless, we do it. But, uh, so I, so I'm saying, I would like to hear from, uh, Mr. Seifert, is that his name? The gentleman that, that's our finance guy?
Yeah.
Seifert? And, uh, and get a better idea there.
Go ahead, Chief Smith.
I, I could agree with you, it, it, that figure may go up, but I can also say that if you look at the amount of time that we have spent, uh, going around the block on this issue, every day that a decision is not made, uh, is costing more. You know, um, there was a, a meeting of architects out in, uh, Arizona, uh, early part of last month, I wasn't able to make it, but I sent my captain, and, uh, he came back and he was like, um, the average cost right now, based on the figures that they've given us, is about six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's standing about right with what, uh, what's being built right now in Victoria in terms of public safety buildings. Um, you know, to be honest with you, I recall our conversation that we had about maybe a month ago on, on the modular. Um, it didn't, it didn't get any traction with me, and I'll tell you why. Um, it, it seems as though we want public safety and we wanna support the police, but sometimes, uh, we, we have to, we have to be prepared to, to make that sacrifice. Public safety, we all see is very, very important, but how much longer are we going to not make decisions on this? I, I think that if there was something that we, we wanna propose, you know, we could've had enough time to put that, to put together something to present to individuals to say, okay, hey, look, this is what I'm proposing, or this is what I think. But, um, um, I understand what you're saying about living within our means, but I don't really know that that was the charge of this committee. You know, I, I think we were just, we were just trying to come up with some ideas and maybe some locations, and, uh, so if we have a different direction that you want us to go, then, um, and that was my understanding, right? If, if there's something that we should be doing that we're not, not doing, let us know, but I, I wanna again say that the longer that it takes to make a decision, and, and we did say that we're on a time crunch because we want this to be on the ballot by November, and so, uh, with us only having, uh, uh, very few meetings, and not really as much direction as maybe we're now, it seems as though we're being told, then, I mean, just, just let us know exactly what it is.
But that's, that's just, he's just, no, yeah, yeah, Chief, Mayor Protem is just making his personal comments.
My personal, right? Don't, let's not.
So that's not speak, yeah, he doesn't speak for the other four of us.
This is, this is a perspective that I'm offering on this side, but I will say that I'm, my goal is to make sure that this, if and when we have a bond in, on this, that it passes, and, uh, and today, our voter and our residents is very, is very leery of just bonds in general, right? So we've got to deal openly, uh, transparently with what we're gonna do with this money, make sure that it follows through in, in, in that regard. And, um, and I guess a big criteria for me is, uh, I had a figure, just so that you, that, now looking at it from up here, I did have a figure based upon some past presentations from the finance people, uh, and that for me is, is my, my ideal number, uh, so that we don't, the city doesn't find itself in a situation where, God forbid, uh, we have a natural disaster, and we have to have certain needs, that, uh, we no longer have a federal agency to provide assistance, as we've been so generous in getting in, in past events, correct? And so that's, that's how I'm analyzing this on this side. That's why I'm looking at options.
Anyone else on this piece?
Well, let me.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I saw that the Voshe property, you, you kinda gathered my attention when you said about, um, the neighborhood issue, about the noise, and, um, and I saw the cost was a little different. I saw the one for, in District B, um, you said you had unknown costs and something like that, I guess you couldn't really say if it was gonna be more or less because of the structure, and we've been told, the previous, uh, development director, Kathleen, uh, told us that, that whole structure, she felt needed to be demolished. I'm personally going for the new building on Voshe, because I think it's the center of our community, um, and I think a new building that will attribute to the growth of our area, and then it's right by the new, uh, high school, I think that'll, in my opinion, that's, that's my opinion, but, um, to talk to me a little bit more about the unknown costs of the, what you were talking about, that part, like, how much more do you think it'll go up for the oth- other building?
So, um, as I recall, and these are site visit photographs that I had from years ago, right? The, the internal structure at Building A, it's a pre-engineered building, um, that I, I believe is built in the eighties, I think, as I recall, it's built in the eighties. Um, there's a lot of rusted connections at its base, um, the, the building has a slight tilt to it, and I don't remember which direction it was, I remember sitting there and watching the water, um, and that there are portions of the building, uh, where the skin is no longer tight, right? You can actually see sunlight, you know, through it.
Right.
So, I, I think the question that we always, uh, pose, right? We have to make decisions for police officers and residents who are not yet born.
Right.
That's a, that's a lot of gravitas about how we go about having these discussions, it's a hard thing to do. Um, you know, fifty years is a hard thing to comprehend, um, and, and so, you know, and I know this is somewhat self-serving as an architect, but when I go look at a building that is already forty years old, and I think to myself, am I looking at a ninety-year structure? Probably not. And, and so, to the unknown cost, I don't know what it would cost to make that a ninety-year structure, because to your point, I'd probably just tear it down.
Right.
Right? And so when we get in, you know, I, we have clients that'll ask us, please go do a full structural analysis, and we'll spend six figures on that, and we'll come back, we'll have this exact same discussion, right? We can go put a million dollars in steel, or we can go put a million dollars in new steel, whichever you want. Um, pre-engineered metal buildings have a purpose, they're great, I need a boat storage real fast, that is a perfect way to do that. I need an animal shelter, that's a great way to do that. Uh, I need a hospital, probably not, right? I need a police station, it's just, probably not? I need public works, yes, right? And, and so, we, we tend to draw from broad experiences to help inform that kind of gut feeling, and so to your, to your question, what are those costs? In my experience, uh, doing this, I can think of maybe only a handful of times where the owner decided that the retrofit cost was worth the long-term risk, and there are very specific reasons why that happened. Um, in one instance, we have a train station, right? It's an existing train facility, it was a forty-year-old facility, I can't move railroad tracks, so we're gonna keep the building right here, right? That's a very specific instance. Um, in another instance, I, I had a stadium where all the electrical services came in, this one really old building, but I can't move a stadium, right? Those are the two instances that I could think of off the top of my head, where we decided that the juice was worth the squeeze. That doesn't feel like what we're talking about here, which is why I don't recommend it, and, and so I, I, I don't wanna give you a, you know, forty-four dollars and thirty cents, I, I don't know. I'm telling you, my professional experience is that this, this would be the first time I've done this.
Okay. So, so to our committee, I know Jay, uh, I know that Councilman, um, Compiun talked about prefab, I'm a believer in three D, and sometimes you can get tax breaks when you build, when, on the Voshe side, and a three D type of building, which you can do with prefab as well, and that may save some money as well, just a thought, I just wanna put that, I'm, I'm done there.
So, and, uh, Mr. Compiun, I, I don't know the three companies that you're suggesting, but we have worked with a number of companies that do exactly this, they're a prefab modular system, you pick the models you want, you arrange them how you will, uh, arrange them, and they, they come out, they hook them together, it's faster, it's cheaper. Um, again, there is a, there is a, a purpose and a need for that, and I don't know the U of H story, you know, usually, but where we see prefab, where I've done a lot of this, um, Waller County, uh, needs to renovate their justice center, but we're not gonna go build a, a building, and I'm not gonna go rent a building, they put out, they did a whole courtroom, whole, whole district court, out of prefabricated buildings, perfect way to do that. And as, as the, uh, county goes through and renovates all of their facilities over the next ten years, this becomes the surge for that, that is an excellent use of that. I, I know universities that have done this. Um, the one police station I can think of, I did not touch this, I've not doubled it specifically, um, and I'm gonna get the county wrong, West Texas County, big oil boom, we need more officers here, right now, prefab, that's how they did it, and it worked out perfectly, um, found dirt patch, double well, double police station, fabulous. Um, worthy of investigation, uh, in my experience, it has not been the most obvious choice, but again, is worthy of, of investigation, should you choose to do that.
Yeah, yeah, let me, let me, I, I see you, Joe. Um, I, I think, Mr. Long, I, I, I think I fall on the same side of this as, as Chief Smith. Uh, I don't, I don't know that a prefab, uh, building would be the best for a public safety building, however, I will say, there were a lot of jail cells in that building, and, and sounds like from what Sergeant Cantu said, even in, in the best of times, there may be two, three, maybe on a busy day, four, uh, what would you call them? Subjects, prisoners? And if, if, if you don't mind, when, when did you start, Mr. Cantu? Twenty-fourteen? Okay, now we're, we're ten years later, and that's just not happening, and not only in your jail, Lamarck, but that's not happening in Hitchcock's jail, it's not happening in, so I would say to trim that cost, if we are attempting to trim the cost, I would like to personally look at trimming the amount of jail cells first, uh, if, and to see how far we get with that, as opposed to, uh, a modular building. I'm not against a modular building, I'm simply saying, if it is, uh, the council's will to try to see if we can cut the cost, I would think one of the areas we would look at almost immediately is reducing the amount of actual cells that we have, uh, if that makes sense.
Uh, if that, if that makes sense, and I would just say that I, I, I hear you, I don't necessarily, we just, just on the fact that we're talking about, see, that we're anticipating to grow, to grow more, there are certainly some.
That's a good point, yeah.
And we can never, you know, we can't predict what's going to, or we could have an incident, or we have arrest, both, we could go in, and have it going below what we have now, which is just backwards, whether it's that, or we don't need to add more, which we lose, we start now.
Let, let me ask you this, and then I'll get Joe back in, just curious. So if we, if there was a situation that we had more, uh, I guess at this point, you call them prisoners, correct, or no?
Detainments.
Prisoners, thank you, thank you, I don't wanna mischaracterize anybody. If we had more, just in general, general question, if we had more detainees, like today, than we had cells, are other departments like Hitchcock, Santa Fe, do they allow us, do they help us, do we share, do we help them with extra jail space?
I've never seen, we could take, it is free.
Okay, okay. Sure.
What, what traditionally happens is that you double book, right? And so in the event that you have, and I'll, I'll give you an example.
All right.
I'll give an example, um, you know, one of the things.
Lowry, then you, and then, go ahead, I'm sorry, we're organizing.
It's, uh, um, what you'll do is you'll double book, right? So the, the way we design these, uh, it's, it's a prisoner bed, right? It's, you have two beds, but you could put ten people in there, right? It is, it's doable. Um, what I would say is that, uh, policing changes as communities evolve, right? This is, this is a difficult thing, but it's rather obvious. Um, and, in my experience, the expansion of a jail is very difficult, in the way, your detention facility, in, in the way yours is currently designed, it's a closed box, it has to be, and there's lots of specialty systems that go into that, uh, HVAC evacuation, anti-ligature, uh, camera systems, 'cause you don't wanna have somebody who decides to complete suicide in your detention. Uh, we, we don't skip on this, um, and they're very difficult to expand later, uh, and, and so as you have cities, I'll, I'll give an example, um, not to name names, West Houston County experiencing massive amounts of growth, the constable's office can't keep up, right? When you're doing four thousand houses a year, like, you get a bunch of riding teenagers, you get a bunch of house parties, you get a bunch of, you know, underage minors that are drinking, that have a very specific type of, uh, process they have to go through, right? If you apes a teenager, you can't put them in general pop, you gotta put them to the side. So, um, one of the things about how we've configured your detention facility is that you could take the women's side and make it juvenile, and it'll meet all the same standards in the event that you have a mass arrest situation, right? Um, you know, it, it's something to think about, right? It, it's space that's hard to expand, hard to put in, and back in the math, if I did two thousand square feet of detention facility, it's one point two million dollars. We're, we're talking about a five percent change, which is not nothing, I don't mean to poo-poo them. If, if we're trying to get to a ten million dollar budget, that's not how we're gonna get there, but if we're talking about driving value, hundred percent, that's a discussion. Um, one last thought to the pre-engineered discussion, and, and again, I fully admit, this is a very self-serving comment, as an architect, and as a municipality, municipal buildings are a source of pride within the city. Um, they're, they're not for nothing, right? And when you see cities that do them well, there's a lot to be said for that. Uh, as we look at our surrounding cities, Sherwood Land, Pearland, Humboldt, that take pride in their civic buildings, um, there, there's a value to that, right? And you don't get that in a pre-engineered building. That's not to say that if, if I only have this much money, and the purpose is what I need it for, a hundred percent, hold on, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna stand in the way of doing that, but it is something to consider, that if this is the, you know, first bond, City of Lamarck's gonna pass, and this is a building that is the first time we're gonna build this type of building in what will literally be sixty-five years, 'cause you haven't built one since the original one in, in the sixties, and you deliver that, there is a source of civic pride that goes with that, or lack of it at all. That's what y'all built, you know, something to consider.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha. Mr. Lowry, Ms. Yancy, and then Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I think it's imperative that we, we keep the amount of, uh, jail cells, and, and without getting us into trouble, um, uh, the reason is, you know, down there, as far as detention, is be, because we can't, because of the condition of the facility, so, a, and it's known in the community that nothing's gonna happen, you're just gonna get a pat on the wrist and sent out the door because we can't detain you.
Mm-hmm.
So, we need, we need to maximize that as much as possible, so that's not known in the community, you, you commit a crime here, you're gonna do time here. That's it.
Very good, Ms. Yancy.
So the three D technology I was talking about, that could work with the brick building, that can work with prefab, but you, sometimes you can get tax breaks from that, governments can get tax breaks from that if you do the three D technology, 'cause it is new, and the three D, the, the three D technology also helps against windstorm, your insurance is, uh, goes down, so I'm just saying, as an option.
To make sure we're clear, three D printing technology of a building, right? Understood.
And we would be the first in the county to do it, for a government building, that's it.
There, there is a cost premium to it, right? Where, where three D printing is really effective, is in, right now, mass housing, right? I'm gonna go put the same thing fifteen thousand times, great. Um, th- these are customized buildings, um, and so what, what we try to do is create a Walmart with a nice skin, 'cause what I, what we wanna make sure we do is you have the ability to reconfigure it over time. One of the things that makes buildings last longer is to make them more flexible, like, we don't want interior load-bearing walls, if we can avoid it, we wanna make sure we have column spacing that allows us to reconfigure space over and over and over again, right? And, and in some ways, Walmarts are great, big open spans, we've converted them into hospitals, healthcare facilities, we've converted a Walmart into a police station, it's doable. Um, so, uh, uh, I have not seen three D printed technology deployed for a municipal building, and if we can explore this more, a hundred percent, uh, it's not something we have experienced.
There's some, I'll, I'll bring it.
I bring it.
Okay, okay. Mayor, were you there, I'm sorry? Mayor Protem?
You mentioned the Waller County, then, my light went off. I was with the Waller County judge, who's a friend, and he, Waller County, and I didn't know this in terms of population, their population is just over fifty thousand in Waller County. They're growing so fast, though, because of KD expansion in that area. And that was the, and we talked about this, actually. That was the idea behind the modular construction. They needed to live within their means, and they needed an ability to go ahead and expand, which is one of the restrictions that you have on a, on a building like this. Right here is our space, we can't just add on something on that, and, and that would make sense. So that reminded me when you mentioned that, in talking with the county judge and on, on that side.
But I, I- What they wanted was, what they wanted was speed.
Speed and speed, exactly, exactly.
And, and Waller County is eventually going to build a justice center that replaces it.
Yes, yes, yeah. And, and it's got more income too, because that's the goal too, more income as a community.
They, they saw that as a temporary fix, is what you're saying?
It was, it was a rapid response fix.
Rapid, rapid, but it's not temporary, it was rapid, they're, they're taking it serious. Yeah, taking it seriously. The other thing that I was thinking, now we have, and, and then, and I've mentioned this in council here, I think HUD's about to approve it, but it's the half a billion, not, is it half a billion? What did I say, Ms. Yancy? It's half a billion dollars in the, the Hurricane Barrel Community Development Block Grant dollars that are coming in. And once that's approved, then I'm going to make sure that, that we, as a community and others, if, if it's necessary at the county, make sure that we, we access as, as much of those dollars. What, if we can also include certain disaster response purposes in the facility, then, and you know from your experience as well too, those are key words when you're writing applications and stuff, there's additional value there that, that we'll allocate dollars for. So that's something that's in my mind is, as we look at this facility as well too.
And it, it, it's important to note that, to, to your point, if you have a high water response team, right? That is a four hundred thousand dollar apparatus that you don't necessarily want baking in the Texas sun, right?
Exactly.
You know, if, at the time we did the programming, that vehicle does not exist. If indeed this is something that we're thinking of, we need to program appropriately. They're big expensive vehicles, they're expensive to maintain. But if you're that one person on a roof, it's a godsend, right? And that's what government's for, right? You, you do the really unnecessary thing once, right?
Anyone else? Hearing now, Casey, is the person from Stifle available yet?
I will make him available.
You're going to make him available now? You have to call him?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And he's going to be on that microphone, is what you're saying?
I will put him on this microphone here, yes, sir.
Okay. There are three of you here that have not spoken on the committee. Before we wrap up, Mr. Mishich, Spanington, and Ms. Loftus, we'll definitely allow you, if you have something you want to add. I know y'all are being quiet, but, but I wanted to give you an opportunity before we close out. Are you ready?
Yes.
Can they give us their full name and?
Brad, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, I can't hear the, the rest of the room. You put it me on speaker?
I have you, I have you on speakerphone on my phone, and I have you with a microphone.
Ask him to give us his full name for the record.
Can you please give your full name for the record?
And then he can go into his presentation.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, mayor and council. This is Brad Engst with Stiefel Public Finance. We serve as the city's financial and bond advisor.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Brad, you're okay to start your presentation?
Okay, great, thank you. I apologize for the technical difficulties. And a pleasure to be there in person with you next Monday, the fourteenth, as we continue to have additional discussions. We got word just before the holiday last week that you all were considering this. I haven't been talking to the Public Safety Committee directly, but as we visited with you in the past, we did go back and revise some of the bonding capacity and projections that we find for the city's opportunity for a GO bond. And the GO bonding is a little different than some items that we've presented to you in the past in, in a couple different respects. That, that we've considered certificates of obligation in the past, we've looked at tax notes, and really those were a financing at a single point in time in order to provide for that financing of a, of a, of a facility or, or infrastructure. With word that you all were considering a GO bond election as, as to allow your voters to have a say in these projects, we evaluated this a little differently. And instead of doing a single financing at one point in time here in the next year or so, what we did is, we looked at financing options over the next five years. And that's because if you send a question to your voters, if you send a bond proposition to your voters and they approve it, you actually have some time in the future, you would be authorized to issue that GO bond out the ten years, but, but usually we try and get that accomplished in the next five years or so. Secondarily, because of the spot in time you're at with the planning and design, honestly, or frankly, you wouldn't need to dancing immediately. You would probably jump into the in-depth architecture and engineering and design of plans before you got into, you know, an RFP process for general contractors to bid on the construction project. So that, that period of time usually takes two to three years you know, in the time after an election to build those plans out, to go through the construction process, and also finance that construction process at the same time. And so we have, all that to say, we've revised the numbers that we've shown you, and it's, and it's a bit of good news. It helps provide some additional capacity for you all without as big of a tax impact as we had shown previously. And so there's also another benefit that we've factored into this. The preliminary assessed valuation of the City of Lamarck has come in, and it's not quite as high as it has been in past years as y'all gained tax base and size. It, it's, it's natural for that percentage to decrease, even if the same nominal amount comes on. But we're seeing a projected increase of about eight percent from that preliminary valuation provided by the Galveston appraisal district. So we haven't worked that figure into these numbers. We did use a more modest number, but because of that, it helps increase some of the bonding capacity. So, okay. Without further ado, the numbers that we have put together, basically without a tax increase, so holding your current tax rate steady, we estimate that you could finance approximately seventeen point five million in project cost and soft cost, et cetera, total of seventeen point five in borrowing over the next five years. With a one cent increase in your tax rate, the INS tax rate that is, we estimate you could borrow twenty-three million over the next five years. With a three cent increase, we estimate that you could borrow thirty-one million over the next five years. And with a five cent increase, we estimate you could borrow thirty-nine million over the next five years. So the next question and item that we wanted to evaluate quickly for you is, well, how much does that relate to? How much of an increase does that mean for the average taxpayer? And so if you look at, so the, the zero cent increase, obviously that would be no additional tax rate increase on, on a house. But a one cent increase, so again, the twenty-three million dollar option, a one cent increase annually equates to about fifteen dollars a year for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. Now, the average home value in Lamarck is approximately two hundred and forty-